Alright, so I'd like to welcome everybody. And I would start off by acknowledging that we are on the traditional lands of First Nation and Métis people have been a, it's been a gathering place where we're situated for thousands of years. I'm going to also suggest that people stick around tonight for the announcements. We have a lot of announcements and a lot of good and useful announcements, important ones. So I'm going to ask, people have the time that they stick around and they'll, they'll pick up on that. So is, moving right along, is Su Krit with us? I didn't see her. Maybe not. Alright, well, this is typically when we would do the minutes of the last meeting, but I will, I'll move that along and hopefully she'll join us and we can get to the minutes when she joins us. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Walter, I mean Jeff, to go ahead and provide us with this month's installment of News from Space. Jeff?
Okay, thanks, Tom. I think we're like two meetings behind on the minutes now, aren't we?
I think so. I think that's right. Yeah, I know. We may have a whole meeting devoted exclusively to adopting minutes. I don't know. We'll see.
Okay. Alright, well, this is News from Space for the month of April. Fair amount of stuff went on, fair amount of stuff I left out because for time, but anyway, we'll get going here.
The dust buildup on NASA's inside Mars lander is severe enough to see from orbit. In before and after images, one can see the red Martian soil covering the lander which touched down in November 2018 in a high-definition image acquired April 9th from the agency's Mars Reconnaissance Orbiter. The Mars inside lander went into safe mode in January after so much dust covered its solar panels that little solar power was available. Although power production has since recovered, the agency said that it expects power to continue only until mid-year or so. Until that day comes, Insight Lander continues to provide surprising findings. Since the lander's arrival, it has detected countless events dubbed Marsquakes using the signals to map the planet's interior. In a new report published April 22nd in the Seismic Record, scientists on the mission reported the two largest seismic events to date recorded. Lead author Anne Wallington said they were the largest and most distant events by a considerable margin. The first seismic event called SO976A, meaning it occurred on the 976th Sol after the lander arrived, was a magnitude 4.2 and occurred on August 25th, 2021. It originated in Valles Marineris, a vast canyon system on the opposite side of the planet. The second Marsquake called S1000A occurred 24 days later on September 18th. This event was slightly smaller at magnitude 4.1 and the Marsquake's exact location remains unknown other than it is on the far side of Mars. S1000A also lasted for 94 minutes, the longest seismic event ever recorded on Mars. That's a whole lot of shaking going on. On April 19th, NASA announced this life-hunting Perseverance Mars rover just reached a major milestone. Perseverance has arrived safely at the remains of an ancient Martian river delta on the floor of the 45-kilometer-wide Jezro Crater. Mission team members said the delta is a veritable geological feast for Perseverance which is hunting for signs of fossilized Martian life. "We've been eyeing the delta from a distance for more than a year while we explored the crater floor," Ken Farley, Perseverance Project scientist, said. Now that the rover's in the region, its next move will be obtaining images in greater detail revealing where we can best explore these important rocks. Perseverance landed in February 2021 inside Jezro Crater, which mission scientists said hosted a lake in a river delta billions of years ago. Such conditions should be favorable for microbes, meaning the Delta region is a rich area to search for signs of Martian life if it ever existed. The rover made several long drives around an area dubbed Citra, Navajo for amongst the sand. The region is made up of sand dunes and boulders which mission planners called a rover death trap as once in the dunes, Perseverance may not have been able to escape. Meanwhile, NASA's Ingenuity Mars helicopter overflew Citra and captured aerial photographs of the wrecked remains of some of the components that helped deliver it and the Perseverance rover to the surface of the red planet last year. The helicopter surveyed the remains of the parachute that slowed the spacecraft's descent into Mars on February 2021 as well as the shattered backshell that protected the spacecraft as it hurled through the Martian skies at 12,500 miles per hour. Ingenuity obtained a close look at the spent spacecraft parts during its 26th flight which occurred on April 19th, exactly a year after the plucky craft made its first powered flight. The images are packed with useful information that mission scientists can use to fine-tune future landings. The rover jettisoned the parachute and backshell about a minute before landing in Jezro Crater. The rover then slowed for landing with the help of a rocket pack which lowered Perseverance to the surface of Mars on cables and bridles in a technologically complex method NASA calls the sky crane. The hard shell crashed into Mars at speeds of 126 kilometers per hour about a mile from Perseverance's landing site. Even though the supersonic parachute measured 21.5 meters wide when fully inflated in the rarefied atmosphere of Mars, the rover couldn't slow down for landing using aerodynamic braking alone. So the chute was jettisoned to free the craft to finish landing with its rocket-powered descent stage. Perseverance took a break, April 2nd, from its other duties to observe the Martian moon Phobos transiting across the Sun. These observations can help scientists better understand the moon's orbit and how its gravity pulls on the Martian surface, ultimately shaping the red planet's crust and mantle. Officials from NASA's Jet Propulsion Laboratory, which manages Perseverance's mission, said in a statement about the new eclipse video. Other Martian rovers such as NASA's Curiosity have observed solar transits, but the new shots from Perseverance's MaSCAM-Z camera provide the most powerful view yet of such an event featuring a high frame rate yet not used before on the Martian surface. Phobos, which is about 157 times smaller than Earth's moon, is one of Mars' two natural satellites. The other, Deimos, is even smaller than Phobos. Scientists think the two lumpy bodies may be former asteroids that were captured by Mars's gravity. SpaceX and the Houston-based company Axion Space made history with the launch of AX-1, the first all-private mission to the International Space Station. It launched on April 8th from the Kennedy Space Center aboard the SpaceX Crew Dragon capsule Endeavour. The mission was commanded by Michael Lopez Alagiria, an American and former NASA astronaut hired by Axion. He was joined by Itan Strib from Israel, Larry Connor, an American, and Canadian, Mark Pathy. Each of the three passengers is thought to have paid $55 million for their seats. After less than a day, the spacecraft docked with the ISS where they planned to spend 10 days aboard. Once on the orbital outpost, the crew was not there just to clown around. The private crew conducted more than 25 different research experiments. Following their time on the ISS, the spacecraft undocked aiming for a splashdown in the Atlantic Ocean. Bad weather in the landing zone delayed the return, stretching what was intended to be a 10-day stay on the ISS to 16 days. China's record-setting Shenzhou 13 mission is in the box. The Shenzhou spacecraft, carrying three astronauts, landed safely in China's Inner Mongolian Autonomous Region on April 16th, about nine hours after departing the country's new space station. The touchdown wrapped up the Shenzhou 13 mission, which spent a national record of six months in orbit. The longest previous Chinese crewed mission was Shenzhou 12, which sent three astronauts to the station for 92 days last year. Shortly after landing, all three astronauts radioed that they were feeling fine after their long space mission. For perspective, six months is the duration of a normal astronaut mission to the International Space Station. Shenzhou 13 set other national marks. For example, the missions Wang Yaping became the first woman to live aboard the station and the first Chinese woman ever to conduct a spacewalk. Wang was joined on Shenzhou 13 by Yi Gangpo and Xia Jiaeng, who commanded the mission. The trio lifted off on October 15th. Xia, Wang, and Yi were very busy during the six months in orbit. The astronauts, or "hugging knots" as Chinese space ties are called, performed two spacewalks, conducted more than 20 different science experiments, and delivered two live educational lectures. The Shenzhou 13 crew also spent time getting the station ready for its next round of visitors, which will arrive relatively soon. The Shenzhou 14 mission is expected to launch in early June. A fresh assessment of a distantly risky asteroid brings good news. It's even less of a threat than astronomers had feared. The chances of crashing into Earth were always tiny and long in the future. As of 2015, scientists had calculated that an asteroid dubbed 1950DA had a 1 in 8,000 chance of impacting the Earth in the year 2880. But a new analysis knocked the asteroid out of the top spot of NASA's list of known asteroids that are most potentially hazardous to Earth. The new assessment says the asteroid, which is 1.3 kilometers wide, poses even less risk than previously believed. The probability of impact is tiny, 1 in 30,000. I know I'll sleep better tonight knowing that, so, sorry Bruce and Ben. You can stand down, your services are not required. Speaking of asteroids, NASA's Double Asteroid Redirection Test, or DART, is on course to impact an asteroid and attempt to alter its trajectory late in this year of 2022. NASA's Artemis 1 Moon Rocket has returned to the Vehicle Assembly Building at NASA's Kennedy Space Center following incomplete wet dress rehearsal attempts earlier in April. Artemis 1 began its journey from the VAB to Pad 39B on March 17th and began the wet dress rehearsal on April 1st and had hoped to complete it by April 3rd. During the wet dress rehearsal, NASA was unable to run its new rocket through its complete gamut of tests needed to ensure that the vehicle is ready for flight. The wet dress rehearsal revealed several technical issues with the rocket and in particular, its mobile launch tower. The Artemis 1 team identified a faulty valve in the launch tower as well as a hydrogen leak in the line leading from the tower to the rocket. The mobile launch pad and tower that Artemis 1 used was originally built for the Ares 1 rocket, part of the Council's Constellation Project. The conversion of the pad and tower, built for the $2-million Ares 1 to accommodate the $6-million Artemis rocket, was carried out by five different companies. Several design flaws have been identified in the launch tower assembly. The new pad and tower, purpose-built for Artemis, is now under construction but will not be ready for some time. The Artemis 1 stack rolled off Pad 39B late on April 25th, back to the VAB. At the Vehicle Assembly Building, technicians will examine the Artemis 1 and make repairs and gear up for another run at the dress rehearsal in the coming weeks. With all the work ahead, Artemis 1 will likely not be ready in time for the mission's midsummer launch window and is now targeting a date sometime in August.
Okay. There it is.
Well done, Jeff, as usual.
I was really hoping for a better report on Artemis, but oh, well.
It was really enjoyable as usual. Well, well done. Just great stuff.
Thank you.
So typically at this point, we'd be going to our guest speaker, however, Abdur has advised that he needs to leave relatively, probably before the end of the meeting and we usually have astro-imaging corner as the last or second last feature. So I'm going to ask Abdur if you wouldn't mind and if with the indulgence of our guest, I wouldn't mind waiting a bit if Abdur can go ahead and do astro photography, astro-imaging corner right now. So Abdur, I'll make you guest host or co-host and let you take it away.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, so I will share my screen. There we go. Okay, there we go. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, there we go. So welcome to Astroimaging Corner number 119. And we'll get started. So for anyone joining us for the first time, Astroimaging Corner is the part of the regular meeting where I share images that have been sent in by, by various RASC members. So if you would like your image to be featured in this part of the meeting, you can always send it using the Astroimaging Corner link on the RSC Edmonton Centre webpage or you can email it to me or Facebook message or whatever works. So I'll have to pull up my note here. Okay, so our first image of the night is from Alistair Ling and this is the moon rising over downtown Edmonton. And this was taken on the evening of April 2nd from Forest Heights. And you can see the earth shine there as well. And I'll just make this full screen. There we go. So you can see the earth shine as well. So the umlaut part of the moon is being lit up by the reflection of sunlight off the earth. And this next image from Alistair, this is the moonrise from April 17, 2020. And this is a composite of four images at 200 millimeter, all at one-fifth of a second. So very, very nice colors. This next shot is Venus and Jupiter, also from Alistair. This was taken Saturday morning on April 30th with, at 150-millimeter focal length. So very nice. Eric and I were actually very lucky this weekend to be able to see Venus and Jupiter both during the daytime in the afternoon and we could surprisingly see the bands of Jupiter. So I'd recommend checking that out to everyone right now.
Just a second. What?
And the next image is from Tom Owen. This is Messier 27, the Dumbbell Nebula. And this is a planetary nebula in the constellation Velpikula, if I pronounce that correctly, and is 1,360 light-years away. And this was imaged in the early morning hours of April 24th at Pigeon Lake using an Edge HD 8-inch with focal reducer at f7 and Tom's QSI 683 CCD camera. And this was, this was a total of three hours of hydrogen alpha and oxygen exposures using six-minute sub-exposures. And this was stacked in AstroPixel processor and processed in the HOO palette using Star Tools. Just phenomenal detail there, Tom. Great job as usual. And this next one, again, this is Messier 94, also from Tom's. Might be one of my favorite images that he's taken. And this is of the spiral galaxy in the constellation Canis Venetici, 16 million light-years away. And this image shows the inner starburst ring and the faint halo of outer arms. And Tom said that he's looking forward to capturing more photons in the future from this one. And it was imaged April 23rd at Pigeon Lake using the Edge HD at f7 and the QSI 683 camera. And this was a total of 118 minutes of exposures in RGB using three-minute and two-minute sub-exposures. And again, this was stacked using APP and processed in Star Tools. So great job. Our next image here is from Ray. This is the Aurora. And this was taken with the Sony A7R2 and a 24-millimeter lens at 1.4 and was shot at ISO 1200 and this was a three-second exposure. So absolutely beautiful as usual, tons of detail and I really like the foreground in this shot as well. So great job, Ray. This next image from Ray, this is, oh, my title did the Aurora, this is actually the Heart and Soul Nebula. And this is the first mosaic that Ray has ever, ever created using two separate panels. And yeah, it looks like it went seamlessly, so very well blended. This was only about 30 to 40 minutes of data as Ray said he lost a number of frames due to the Aurora. And the northern lights are happening quite constantly now and they are starting to affect imaging, which is an odd problem to have and Canada seems to be one of the few countries where we would have that as a problem. And since the nebulas are about 30 degrees above the horizon, it's quite difficult to get good data because of poor seeing as well. And for this shot, Ray was using a QHY 367 full camera, full-frame camera and his William Optics 81 refractor. And the mount used was an Iopron Jim 28 and the focal length was 480 millimeters. And Ray was also using an OptLong L Extreme filter which brought out good color on the limited data. And it was stacked and merged in AstroPixel processor and fine-tuned in Lightroom. And Ray said that APP makes merging images surprisingly easy. So if anyone's trying to merge some images, maybe try to check that out. And our next image, there we go, our next image also from Ray is NGC 7000, the North America Nebula. And this was taken with eight, 300-second or five-minute sub-exposures just before dawn. And it was still taken with the William Optics 81-millimeter refractor at 480-millimeter focal length using the full-frame QHY 367 camera and the OptLong L Extreme filter. And this was also stacked in APP and processed in Lightroom. So very, very nice detail there. And next shot from Ray is the Leo Triplet. It's very well positioned right now, just underneath Leo. So if you haven't had a chance to check that out so far this year, I highly recommend it. And this was a total of 10, 10-minute exposures on the William Optics 132-millimeter refractor and the QHY 268C color camera. And this was at 924-millimeter focal length. And again, this was stacked in APP and processed in Lightroom. And this next shot is just a zoomed-in view of one of the members of the Leo Triplet, the Hamburger Galaxy, and again, shot with the same equipment. And actually just above and to the left of the Hamburger Galaxy, right down here, there, there are a couple of very, very distant quasars. I think some in the order of seven or eight billion light-years away as well. So this is a good target for quasar hunters as well. And the next shot is from Murray Paulson. This is Mercury with the Pleiades star cluster Messier 45. And this was taken Saturday night at closest approach. And Murray said he used a Canon 70-200-millimeter lens at 200 millimeters and at a 4.5. And this was a 15-second exposure at ISO 400 and it was all tracked on a Takahashi Tigo 2 mount. So great job capturing those two together. And next shot also from Murray. This is an older shot. This is from a campfire that Murray had in Morocco back in 2015. And this was an eight-second exposure at ISO 800 and at f4. I was quite surprised he managed to get people to sit still for eight seconds. I have a hard time getting shots at 1/50th of a second at family events where people aren't moving around or blinking. So great job there and great view of Orion as well, right above. Up next is an image from Alan Hobbs from his recent trip to New Mexico. And this was near Silver City on March 31st. And this was a total of 45 subs of one minute each. And the photo was taken with Alan Celestron Edge HD and the ASI 2600 MC camera and a Skywatcher EQ6R Pro mount. And this was processed in PixInsight and Photoshop. Happy to see other PixInsight users as well. Our next shot is also from Alan Hobbs. This is the Horsehead Nebula. And this might actually be one of the finest samples of this region that I've ever seen. So excellent job. And this is the Horsehead and the Flame Nebula. And this was taken at Castilla State Gila Guest House in New Mexico near Silver City on March 27th. And this was a total of 41 minutes of exposures with the same equipment as the last one. And processing was again done in PixInsight and Photoshop. So absolutely amazing job with the processing there. And the next shot is also from Alan. This is the Leo Triplet showing some very, very good detail. And this is Messier 65, 66, and NGC 3628, which is the Hamburger Galaxy over here, surrounded by some quasars. And this was again taken in the same area in New Mexico. And this is a total of 10 three-minute exposures with the same equipment as the last few shots. So just some very, very good detail, especially in, I think this is M65. And the next image from Alan is the Laguna Nebula, again, very, very nice detail. And this was again taken in the same area in New Mexico. And this was a total of 53 30-second exposures with the Rossa8 and ASI 2600 MC camera on the Skywatcher EQ6R Pro mount. And the Laguna Nebula is in the Sagittarius star cloud in the heart of the Milky Way, which is why this region is just so, so populated by stars everywhere. You can also see the little globular cluster just underneath there. So phenomenal shot. You can also see the little globular cluster just underneath there. So phenomenal shot.
And Kent raised his hand.
Oh, okay, uh. Um let's see. Oh, yeah, uh go ahead. Hi, Kent. Go ahead.
Sorry, that was a mistake. I was uh, I'm gonna send a message to hell and telling him what a wonderful job he's done.
Okay, thank you. Sounds good. Okay, yeah, and the next shot from Alan also, this is the Sunflower Galaxy, Messia sixty three, taken from the same area. With the same equipment and this was nineteen subs of three minutes each. Um and this was with the Edge HD eight with the point seven focal reducer. Uh and the Spiral Galaxy UGC eight three one three can be seen at the top right corner as well. That's uh right over here. So nice, uh almost ad John Spiral Galaxy. Uh so yeah, very, very nice detail in the outer regions of this galaxy. And uh the next image is one of mine. I got back to solar imaging again this year. Uh now that the new solar cycle is in full swing. And this one was taken a few weeks ago uh with the Badir Solar Film Filter that I had built on my eight inch reflector. And this was taken with the Fuji X H one uh mirrorless camera. And I took about one minute of video uh in four K and then stacked all the frames to get a sharper shot. Um so this is uh the full solar disc in white light. And then a little while later, I decided to zoom in a little bit and get some more detail. And this was again taken with the solar filter using Badir Solar Film on my eight inch F three point nine reflector. And I use my QHY guide camera this time instead of my mirrorless Fuji, so I was able to get better resolution. Because of the smaller pixels. And you can see tons of granulations all over the solar surface, and these are quite small. I think they're about maybe about a thousand kilometers across, I would guess. Considering this sunspot alone was, was larger than the earth. So it's quite, quite fine detail and the scene was quite good that night. And you can see numerous solar bridges just crossing over the sunspots in various regions. Uh so it might have been some of the best scene that I'd seen up to that point. So seeing definitely makes a huge difference. And this was a um quick time lapse that I had made, uh but I would have to switch. Hopefully, everyone can see that uh still. And this was a time lapse I'd made of a, of a solar prominence on the edge. I guess it looks almost like a coronal mass ejection. But I put the earth in there for scale to show just how large this was. And this entire time lapse was made over a period of uh half an hour. So for that much movement to occur within half an hour, just a rough gas, those things must have been moving at. Maybe two hundred thousand kilometers an hour or something. I'll try to do the calculations at some point, but uh so I was quite surprised by how fast those were moving. And that was with the Coronado PST with the two point five X Telview Barlow. And my QHY guide camera again, and that was from April twenty fourth. And the next shot was uh one of mine. This is Supernova twenty twenty two HRS, which was discovered on April sixteen. Uh so it had been visible for about two weeks by the time that I imaged it. And it was quite bright considering that it was sixty three billion light years away uh in that galaxy. Uh that was uh, I forget the name of the galaxy exactly. I think NGC four six three seven or something like that. Uh but I was also able to see the supernova visually in an eight inch job two days ago from my Bortle Six backyard. Uh and it was, it was quite, quite bright, so I definitely recommend checking that out. Uh or two days ago, actually, I saw it from uh, from an area just outside of Caroline, so that's quite bright. And I put a humble picture for comparison, showing where the supernova was not at that time. Uh but uh, yeah, it's, it's quite bright at about magnitude twelve last I, last I had checked. And this was with the C eleven edge at F two five hundred and sixty millimeter focal length. And my ASI sixteen hundred camera, and this was a total of about three hours worth of sixty second exposures. And the last shot is a project I'm working on right now, uh as I have some time. So this was the Surfboard Galaxy and the Owl Nebula. Um and this is again the. C eleven at F two five hundred and sixty millimeter focal length. And this was about four hours of frames through an L filter. So I hope to get the color image of that one at some point. Um so yeah, that is also a huge thank you to everyone who sent in images for, for this presentation. And I hope to see a lot more in the future. Uh so back to you, Tom.
Thank you, Abder, and uh thanks to all of uh, all of the Astroimagers for their fantastic images. Really wonderful. Um all right, so Sharon, I'm going to uh, I don't know if I need to make you a co-host.
No, you don't.
But, okay, well, I'm gonna ask you then to introduce our guest speaker, please.
Okay, well, hello, everybody. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Renee Plou. Um and so Dr. Plume um is, I think, a little bit unusual for one of our guests in that he's actually born in Alberta. In Cold Lake, so even further north than Edmonton. Uh he's lived all over Canada. Um he ended up studying at the University of Toronto and then at the University of Texas at Austin. And then was uh, held research positions at uh the Center for Astrophysics at Harvard and at Goddard. Space Flight Center and then uh came to University of Calgary where he became a professor. Um in astronomy, we have a little bit of a joke in that you can be giving a talk on anything in astronomy and somebody will ask. What about magnetic fields? And Renee actually works on magnetic fields, so you can feel free to ask him about what about magnetic fields. But I think he's gonna tell us about them. So I'm gonna stop now and Renee, could you please uh tell us all about magnetic fields?
Okay, will do. So let me, uh I, I guess I have to get control to share my screen here.
You've got it.
I have it? Okay, great. So, share my screen. Can everyone see my uh, my slides here?
Yes, looks good.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So, um yeah, thank you very much for uh inviting me to give this talk. It's actually the first uh time I've had an opportunity to talk about. This in this particular research topic, which is actually new to me. Um I, I'm relatively new to the, to the field of magnetic, to field of magnetic fields. Um it's not something I've worked on uh a lot, but my group here in Calgary. Um pioneered this new technique that we developed to get um the third dimension. Of a three dimensional magnetic field. So for the first time, we're able to start um imaging magnetic fields or starting to at least talk about. What the three dimensional structure of magnetic fields are. Um this work was really driven forward by my former PhD student, Marinish Tahani, who's now a postdoc at D R A O. And shortly will be moving uh to be a postdoc at Stanford University where she's uh bringing a. Very prestigious Banting Fellowship with her, but um also worked on this with uh Dr. Joanne Brown at University of Calgary and. Uh um Dr. Uni Kynelin at Chalmers University in Sweden. So the outline of my talk is as follows. I'm gonna first give us all a little bit of reminder into electromagnetic waves. I probably don't really need to do that with this audience, but most of you are, are probably more used to dealing with visible light than at any other wavelengths. And I'm gonna be talking primarily about radio waves, so I, I thought a, a brief background would be useful. Uh then I'm gonna briefly talk about magnetic fields and the role that magnetic fields can play. In uh the process of forming new stars, uh new stellar systems. Um from there, I'll, I'll spend some time talking about polarization measurements uh from star forming regions. Which is what allows us to get at the two dimensional magnetic field structure. This is work that people have done since the nineteen fifties. Uh and then I'm gonna spend the bulk of my talk in section four on a technique called Faraday rotation, which we have coupled with. The field of astrochemistry, believe it or not, to um, to, to, to allow us to get that pesky third dimension uh for magnetic field studies. Okay, so moving right along, I mean, I always tell my first year astrophysics courses that astronomy is really a bit of an oddball of, of a scientific field. And that's because we can't go to the places that we want to study. And collect samples and bring it back to our laboratories and twiddle knobs and levers and change voltages and, and analyze um all of this material. Only in very rare cases can we do that. So what we got is what the universe decides to give us and what the universe decides to give us is light, right? And in particular, we really need to look at light at all wavelengths. We can't just focus on one particular wavelength. In order to um uh to understand what's going on in the universe, what sort of physical mechanisms are occurring. So as you probably all know, you go from the very longest wavelengths of, of light, which we refer to as radio light. To the shorter wavelengths, which are infrared, which is uh more easily perceived by our nerve endings than our eyes. And, and we perceive that, of course, as heat, to the visible light that we're all mostly familiar with. To the shorter wavelength, higher energy, ultraviolet, to the X-rays, to the gamma rays, of course. And so light can be written mathematically and can be thought up as a um self-propagating oscillating wave. Um and that wave has a certain wavelength, which is really the distance between two successive wave crests, as you probably all know. And that these waves travel through space at the speed of light. Now, to take it one step fur- further, it's actually an oscillating electromagnetic wave. So it's got not only an electric component, but it's got the magnetic component as well. And those two different components oscillate um um out of phase with one another. And perpendicular to one another as well, right? So that's shown by this simulation right here. Well, the reason that we are interested in looking at different wavelengths of light is because different objects in the universe, different physical processes. Emit light at a variety of different wavelengths. So if you're trying to study something like neutron stars or black holes. Or superheated gas in a million, a million degree range. Um this material gives off light primarily in the X-ray part of the spectrum. So that's the type of telescope that you would wanna use, something like the Chandra. If you're interested in, you know, very hot gas, so you know, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand degrees. Um gas or stars, for example, um that, that type of material gives off light primarily in the ultraviolet part of the spectrum. And here's the galaxy M eighty one seen primarily in the ultraviolet. And you can really see where the young hot stars, the O, the O-type stars exist in this galaxy. So where the active star formation is going on. Our own sun, of course, uh is about six thousand degrees and it emits primarily in the visible part of the spectrum. Um and so that's what you get for, you know, five thousand or so degree gas. If I go down to room temperature, this would be cool material. Um up to a few thousand degrees or so, this is material which would emit primarily in the infrared, right? So here's a picture of a person as seen through an infrared camera. And you can see where the person is hotter and where the person is, is cooler, for example, right? So our bodies at, you know, thirty seven C give off light primarily in the infrared part of the spectrum. And what I'm gonna talk about mostly today is the radio part of the spectrum. So this is radiation, light, which is given off by cold um gas and dust. In the universe. So by cold, I mean like, you know, twenty to fifty Kelvin or about minus two hundred degrees Celsius. Or basically Calgary in springtime, it certainly feels like that last couple of days. Um and so this is a picture of the Orion Nebula seen in, or a piece of the. Piece of, not the ne- nebula that you guys know about invisible, but a piece of a much larger. Um a conglomeration of gas and dust seen in um the Orion constellation. So I'm gonna zoom in on this a little bit. And rotate it and we can see um a region now probably that you're more familiar with. So this is that same, it's blown up region now where we're seeing um emission as seen from the Herschel Space Observatory. And this is far infrared or radio waves um in the millimeter uh wavelengths or in the hundred micron wavelengths. Uh and you can see all of this emission, which is given off by cold gas and dust, this stuff which is like twenty Kelvin. Now, these, in, in the same region of space, um the same region of space can emit radiation at multiple wavelengths. And that's because there are different physical mechanisms at play simultaneously. So not only do we get the emission from the super cold um gas and dust in, in the region of Orion. If I zoom in on this region right here, now you see a region that you guys are probably a little more familiar with and the beautiful image was shown. Of this before. It's actually interesting. I've never heard this referred to as the Flame Nebula before. I, I've only ever known it as NGC twenty twenty four. Um but you have the Horsehead Nebula and you have one of the stars of Orion's Belt here, right? And then if I zoom in on the Horsehead Nebula, I look at that in the near infrared, you see um the, the, the warmer dust. But you can also see dust uh as an absorber right here. Now, I'm really gonna focus on this stuff right here, this cold gas and dust. Because it's this material which are the sites of new star and planet formation. We don't see stars and planets forming in million degree gas or tens of thousand degree gas. You see that those proto-solar systems um begin their lives in their, 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 you know, their, their embryonic stage. Um deeply embedded within this cold material, which becomes gravitationally unstable. Fragments and then collapses into individual um systems. So we're gonna come back and look at that uh a little bit more. But first, I wanna take a look at magnetic fields and the role that they can play in that process of star formation, how they can affect. Um the formation of stars in this type of material. Well, what we see observationally from Herschel and a variety of other telescopes that observe in the radio. Is that these um clouds of interstellar gas are not round monolithic structures. They're very filamentary in nature and you can see some beautiful examples of these beautiful filaments seen in the cold. Uh gas and dust emitting at radio waves. And this is actually a giant, what we call the integral shaped filament in Orion. Um and it's within these regions that we see these new stars form. So these are the nurseries. These are the locations where the stars form. And the process that we probably all know is that it's primarily based on gravity, right? So this is actually a simulation of what happens if I take a spherical cloud of interstellar gas at. Twenty to fifty Kelvin. And I allow Newton's laws to take over. So I allow this thing to just evolve. And every gas particle, every dust particle in this cloud will be attracted to every other particle according to, you know, GMM over R squared, it's the law of gravity. And we can see in a simulated sense what type of structures um would form naturally, right? So if I move this simulation forward, and this was done by a professor by the name of Matthew Bait at the University of Exeter. You see that that monolithic cloud immediately starts to, to turn into a variety of different filamentary structures. You can really start to see them here. The yellow shows you the higher density where there's more stuff. And if we zoom in, you see these filaments get more and more and more intense. And eventually you hit a point. Where the filaments in, in themselves become gravitationally unstable. They fragment into very, very small pieces and those small pieces then collapse to form individual stars. So you don't form one gigantic monolithic star from this giant cloud. This cloud turns into, into filaments, those filaments fragment and it's those fragments within the spine of the filaments. That turn into individual stars. And in this case, we're forming a simulated cluster of stars. But that's not the whole story, right? Magnetic fields actually can affect this process. By um really affecting the evolution of the filaments themselves and the formation of the films. So this is two different simulations done by um a fellow by the name of um Patrick Hannabel at Sac Lé University in Paris. This is a simulation, same sort of thing we just saw um in, in the movie after three million years. And gravity, you know, takes a hold of these things and you form this very cloud-like structure. It is somewhat filamentary. But there are, you know, some large, you know, rather globby looking things that aren't long and elongated. Um but if you do the exact same simulation, but the only thing you change is include magnetic fields within this cloud. What you see is that after an even shorter period of time, after two million years of evolution. You form many more filamentary structures. And these structures are very elongated and, and very striated. And these things become very, very, very uh unstable uh against gravity, I guess, in terms of fragmentation. So rather than form it like a big glob here, you can see actually you've formed a bunch of individual filaments, right? So you've actually enhanced the process of forming these filaments. And if you enhance the process of forming the filaments, you enhance the process of star formation. Because it's these filaments themselves which are inherently unstable and fragmented to smaller pieces which form those individual stars. Well, how does this happen? Well, in a very simplistic way, we can think of it this way. Um if I have a filament that looks like this blue thing right here. And I've got magnetic field lines which thread through that filament in say this orientation. If the gas surrounding this filament here is primarily ionized, well, um. Charged particles can easily flow along magnetic. well, charged particles can easily flow along magnetic field lines, but they can't flow across magnetic field lines. There is a force, which we call the B cross V force, which means that if you try to move a charged particle across magnetic field lines, there's a force that would come in the direction out of the, out of the plane of the board here, right? So you would not allow the charged particles to travel along these magnetic field lines. Now, you might say, well, what if, what about the neutrals? What about things that aren't charged? They're not affected by magnetic fields at all. And you're absolutely right. So the charged particles can go any direction, sorry, the neutral particles can go any direction they want, willy-nilly. But if you've got a substantial amount of charged particles, and we do, there's a lot of free electrons in interstellar space, they get fixed to these magnetic field lines. So think of them as being glued to these magnetic field lines. They can move up and down, but they can't move across, right? Now, if I bring a bunch of neutral particles in this way, they encounter the charged particles which are glued to the magnetic field lines. They collide with them. And this friction between the neutral particles that want to drift across the field lines and the charged particles which are fixed inhibits the motion of the neutral particles as well. And so even the neutral particles have difficulty moving across magnetic field lines, right? So they can only really flow along them. So in this situation, to the left here, ions and neutrals, so electrons, charged atoms, charged molecules, and the neutral particles can flow along the magnetic field lines, right? And what they end up doing then, because this is an area of local gravitational enhancement, this has got some mass here, they're all going to flow towards the filament. They're going to increase the mass of the filament and they're going to make that filament thinner and thinner and thinner, which means that it becomes more unstable and can more easily fragment into those individual solar system-sized fragments, right? So this situation would enhance star formation. If I've got magnetic field lines, however, oriented in this direction, right? Then they can not, ions and neutrals cannot flow towards the skinny axis of the filament. And so you can't feed the filament. And so you don't make it more filamentary. And so you don't increase the ability of the filament to fragment. And so magnetic field geometry like this would inhibit star formation. But there are more complicated geometries that we could have. You can have toroidal geometries, which means that the magnetic field lines are like hula hoops that go around the cylindrical filament here. You could have a helical, and I didn't do a very good job of drawing a helix, but just think of that like a corkscrew, right? So it would wind its way along, along the cylinder. And in both of those cases, this would inhibit the star formation process because the ions and neutrals would have difficulty flowing across the magnetic field lines in this direction and feeding the filament and making it more filamentary and more unstable. You can also have a shape like this called a bow shape or an arc-shaped magnetic field. And this actually enhances star formation. And I'll get back to this towards the end of the talk, right? So I've got these different possible geometries. But the problem is, on the plane of the sky, all of these would look the same. So if I take that cylindrical filament and I turn it on its side, so in our perspective, we're looking down the long axis of the filament, right? But Homer over here is looking at the cylinder as he would see it on the sky, as this long extended thing. Now, from our perspective, I could have magnetic field lines which are straight up and down. I could have magnetic field lines which are helical or toroidal, or I could have these bow-shaped magnetic fields. But on the plane of the sky, on the, in the two-dimensional picture of the sky that we all get, right? These would all look exactly the same. You would not be able to tell that the magnetic, in this geometry, the magnetic field up here is coming out of the screen and down here it's going into the screen. All you can see is the component in the plane of the sky, which starts down here, moving up, it's moving up, it's moving up. So it looks like the magnetic field lines look just like this. So they all look the same. So we need this line of sight measurement, need this component of the magnetic field in and out of the plane of the sky or in and out of the screen in order to disentangle these different geometries. So, but before I get to that, I want to first get to or talk about how we go about measuring this plane of the sky magnetic field, how do we do this to begin with? Well, you know, we, at the very beginning, I was talking a little bit about the cold dust in these regions that radiate at radio wavelengths. And this is, again, another Herschel image at radio wavelengths of another beautiful filamentary structure. You know, it's embedded in much larger structure, but it's the spine of the filament where the stars are being formed, right? Well, these dust particles are actually macroscopic, well, I guess, they're bigger than a molecule, right? But you still need a microscope to see them. So technically, they're microscopic particles, but they're solid particles as opposed to just being big particles. They're composed primarily of silicates or carbonaceous, it depends on where they are formed, what type of environments they're formed. We have some images here of real space dust, this is interplanetary dust that comes from asteroids. This is cometary dust that was brought back from the Stardust Satellite. And this is actually theoretical dust. Somebody did a numerical simulation to see if you could actually produce space dust on a computer, and you actually can. And the important thing is they all are kind of extended. Astronomers and physicists like to model everything as a sphere, right? Imagine that the cow is spherical and measure its volume and its mass and everything. It makes the calculations a lot easier. We obviously can't do that here, these are obviously not spherical. So we're going to do the next best thing and we're going to simulate them as cylinders or ellipses essentially, right? So imagine that my interstellar dust grain, which is emitting radio waves right here, is ellipsoidal in nature, fairly elongated, right? So in an interstellar cloud, I could have these dust grains oriented in any direction I want, all willy-nilly, all over the place. But if these dust grains had any kind of what we call paramagnetic material, so that's just atoms that have unpaired electrons, then what happens is these dust grains have very weak but measurable internal magnetic fields. So you can sort of think of them as tiny little compass needles kind of thing, very, very weak and tiny, but they're still somewhat magnetized. So if I now put these dust grains into some region of space where there's an external magnetic field running in some direction, what happens is that over time, and it actually doesn't take very long, these dust grains begin to align themselves such that the short axis of the dust grain is parallel to the magnetic field lines, right? So these dust grains become aligned with each other, they're not just willy-nilly anymore. Now, you can also kind of think of this elongated dust grain, which has, you know, a magnetic moment and has some unpaired electrons in it, kind of like a dipole antenna. The electrons can move along the long axis. And if they move back and forth along the long axis of the dust grain, these oscillating electrons will produce an electromagnetic wave, just like you would get in, like I said, a dipole antenna. So you can imagine your dust grain here looking like a dipole antenna. And it's emitting now an electromagnetic wave, right? I'm only showing the electric component of this wave. And the important thing is that the electric field has the same geometries, let me go back here for a second, hold on. The electric field of, has the same orientation for every single dust grain. So if these grains were oriented all willy-nilly, then I would get an electric field vector for one grain that came this way and another grain that came this way and another grain that came that way, another one that was that way, right? And this would be what we call unpolarized light. All the electric field vectors are coming at random directions, right? And it's not any preferential direction. But if these dust grains are aligned with respect to the magnetic field, then the light that they give off has one preferential direction or lies in one preferential plane, the electric field does. And so this light then is polarized, right? So the direction of the polarization of the electric field then would be perpendicular to the direction of the external magnetic field. So that's sort of showing it right here, here's my magnetic field, here are my dust grains that are aligned. Here's the direction of the electric field vector. And so the electric field vector is perpendicular to the direction of the external magnetic field, right? So we can determine if light is polarized by using a polarization filter. And a great example of that are polarized sunglasses that most of us have, right? If you turn your lens in some direction, then most of the background light doesn't make it through your polarization filter. Well, we can do this a bit more carefully by putting a polarization filter in front of our telescope and rotating the polarization filter and measuring the amount of light that makes it through, right? So if I have my polarization filter aligned with the direction of the electric field vector, a hundred percent of the light intensity makes it through. If I rotate that polarization filter by forty-five degrees, half of it makes it through. And if I rotate it by ninety degrees with respect to the electric field, then none of it makes it through. So by rotating this, this filter wheel, basically, this polarized filter wheel, I can tell you then that the direction of the electric field vector coming from this region of space has this orientation. And then that tells me that the magnetic field is oriented perpendicular to that, right? So that gives me the direction of the magnetic field by looking at the polarization of dust grains. So how does this theory hold up against observations? Well, this is the polarization observations of a well-known star-forming filament in the Taurus molecular cloud called B two eleven, B two two thirteen. This line here is just showing the spine of the filament, there's lots of protostars forming along here. These green lines then show the results of polarization measurements of this dusty mission. So this is another Herschel image at radio wavelengths. And the direction of the green lines show me the direction of the magnetic field. So the direction of the magnetic field along this filament is oriented somewhat perpendicular to the long axis, to the spine of the filament, just like we saw in a scenario, theoretical scenario, which should enhance star formation, filament growth, filament fragmentation and star formation. This is just an example to show you that we see polarization and therefore magnetic fields at a variety of different scales, right? This is the galaxy IC three forty-two, and the black lines here show you the direction of polarization. So we see magnetic fields throughout this entire galaxy. They're not just isolated to individual star-forming molecular clouds or molecular filaments. This rather Van Gogh-ish looking thing right here is actually not a Van Gogh painting. It is a image from the Planck Telescope, the Planck Space Telescope, of the polarization of the Milky Way Galaxy. So all of these striations here show you the orientation and direction of the magnetic field over the scale of the entire Milky Way. And you can see it's not just straight up and down, there's a lot of strange stuff going on here. There's big loops and there is whirls. So, you know, the magnetic field structure on large scales can be quite complicated and affected by large-scale dynamics within a galaxy. But what we're really interested in in this talk, or what I'm interested in this talk again, is focusing on those individual star-forming filaments. And here's just two examples of blowing up this data set and focusing on two individual star-forming filaments. The striations, the filaments here are shown in the orange, and the striations are showing you the direction of the magnetic field as seen from Planck. The black ones here are polarization measurements taken at near-infrared wavelengths. So that's actually a completely different technique or completely different telescope. But it's showing that the, the two different techniques show us the same results. You know, it's not like one technique is giving us one result and the other technique is giving us a different result. And so we can't believe it, we're confirming the results here, right? So, and what we're seeing again is that these magnetic field lines tend to be oriented somewhat perpendicular to the long axis of the filament. The same is also true here, it's a little messier, you can start to see some of these whirls and, and things like that. And it's not looking quite so great there, but on average, you know, if you stand back and you squint, which we do a lot in astrophysics, the general orientation of the magnetic field vectors is perpendicular to the long axis of these clouds. Okay, well, that's great, right? So this is a technique that we've had since the nineteen fifties and we can measure the two-dimensional magnetic field geometry in the plane of the sky. But we still don't really know what this three-dimensional geometry actually is. And this is where my group at the University of Calgary comes in, where we came up with this kind of new technique to measure the third dimension. Well, you know, I'm actually blowing my own horn a little too strongly here because actually this was Michael Faraday back in the mid eighteen hundreds who came up with this idea, where he discovered something that we call today the Faraday effect. And the Faraday effect describes how the angle of that polarization, the angle of the electric field vector changes as polarized light travels through a magnetized and ionized medium. So if you have a polarized beam of light that travels through interstellar space, well, we've already seen that interstellar space is filled with magnetic fields. So we've got that, check that. It turns out also most of the low-density volume of interstellar space is ionized, it's filled with electrons. So it really is a magnetized plasma that this radiation is traveling through. And so when it does that, travels through some volume of space, it has some length to it, and it has some free electrons in here. You can see that the original orientation of the electric field vector was straight up and down, so it would have been polarized light in that direction. But as it travels through this region of magnetized plasma, the angle of polarization changes, it actually begins to rotate, as you can see in this simulation right here. Well, this is actually not a new technique, this has been used over, for large scales in the galaxy to measure the three-dimensional structure of magnetic fields on large scales. But no one really figured out how to do this on scales on the order of molecular clouds and star-forming molecular filaments that I'll, that I'll show you right here. Now, how do we do this? So the angle of polarization here has a very simple dependence on the wavelength of the light. This is where the math comes in, in this talk, right? So don't worry, it won't be too hairy. So this beta is the angle of polarization that I measure at my telescope. And it's related to the initial angle of polarization before it entered this region of magnetized plasma called beta naught here, by this factor RM times lambda squared, where lambda is the wavelength of the light that you're working on, working at. So it has a dependence on the square of the wavelength of the light. And this factor here, which we refer to as the rotation measure. There's a lot of physics that goes into this rotation measure, but it can really be distilled down to really relatively simple equation, where I have a constant, which is point eight, times this factor N E. And N sub E is just the density of electrons in this volume of space. So it's really the number of electrons per cubic meter in this volume of space. It also depends on the path length or how far through this magnetized plasma does the, does the beam of polarized light travel through, so it's this distance D, and on the strength of the magnetic field along the line of sight towards the observer. So directly from the emitting object towards the observer, so in and out of the plane of the sky essentially, along the line of sight. And that's the thing that we're trying to find, this is that third dimension that we're trying to get, right? So hopefully, we all remember this equation from, from high school math, y equals mx plus b, which is really just the equation for a straight line, right? So if I've got some, some parameter y and I plot it versus x and I get, you know, y at this value of x is this and y at this value of x is that, and I fit a straight line to it, I get y equals mx plus b, right? Where this value here, this value m, is just the slope of the line, right? So it's the rise over the run, so the rise over the run, that gives you the slope. And this is just what we call the y-intercept. So if I were to extend this down to x equals zero, what would the value of y be, right? So it would be nineteen point one in this case. Well, why am I wasting your time talking about the math of a straight line? Well, because this is exactly the equation for the rotation measure. I have beta equals RM times something plus beta naught, right? So if I instead measure the polarization angle beta, and I do it at a variety of different wavelengths, and I, and I plot it as wavelength squared, well, the polarization angle of light at this wavelength is this, the polarization of light at this wavelength is this, and so forth. If I fit a straight line to that, the slope of that straight line gives me the rotation measure, right? Gives me this number right here. So now this number becomes an observable. It's something that I could observe by looking at the polarization angle of light at different wavelengths. This is a constant, right? Now, what I need to do is get at this and get at this. But let's first take a look at this rotation measure just for a second, right? So what we do is we've got our filament in the sky. And we're looking through the Milky Way Galaxy, which is the ionized plasma here, the ionized plasma. And what I do, I have to move And what I do, I have to move this thing back here. What I do is I look at these background galaxies, right? So there's a bunch of galaxies outside our own galaxy, as you all know, you saw some beautiful images of them. Some of them, like quasars and active galactic nuclei, they emit intrinsically polarized light. So these are bright objects that emit polarized light. This polarized light travels through our Milky Way, which is a magnetized plasma, and it undergoes Faraday rotation. So for this galaxy, what I'll do is I'll look at this wavelength and this wavelength and that one and that one. I'll measure the polarization angle at each of those wavelengths. I'll fit a straight line to it, and I now have the rotation measure for that galaxy towards that position on the sky. I do the same thing for this galaxy and this galaxy and as many possible galaxies as you have that are surrounding this interstellar cloud or interstellar filament of interest. So from our perspective, what we see is this filament in the plane of the sky. It's surrounded by a bunch of galaxies. But now, at each one of the positions of these galaxies, I have measured the rotation measure. And so I can calculate the strength of the magnetic field along the line of sight, pointing, you know, into the plane of the sky and out of the plane of the sky at each one of these points, right? And that's exactly what we're trying to do. So just to remind ourselves, this is the equation that we had. The rotation measure is equal to this constant times the density electrons times the magnetic field along the line of sight, times the distance through the galaxy that it would travel. Or it's actually a distance through the filament, the edge of the filament that it would travel. So I can just invert this equation mathematically, and I have that the magnetic field along the line of sight is equal to this rotation measure, which is now an observable, right? This is something I get from the data divided by these three parameters. And so I've got to come up with what these two things are. Well, this, I changed it to a W rather than a D because we're thinking this as like the distance through the galaxy that it's traveling. But in reality, we're just interested in how much of the filament does the light travel through? So it's going to go through all of the galaxy, but then it's also going to go through part of the filament. And we're just trying to figure out how much of the filament does this light travel through? And so looking at it in the plane of the sky like this, it's really the width of the filament that matters, not the length of the filament, right? Because it's traveling, you know, in and out of the plane of the board right here. So it's traveling along the width of the filament, not along the length of the filament. So we just assume that the filament is a cylinder, and so the width equals the height that we measure. So that's one assumption that we make. And in general, it's not a bad assumption. It would be a terrible assumption if what we think are filaments are actually sheets. But we don't think most of them are sheets. We think they're actually filaments. They're long stringy things. So then we need to get at this thing, the density of electrons, so the number of electrons per cubic meter. And this was the thing that we did a little bit differently in my group. So we were able to estimate what this number is using something called an astrochemical model. Right? So what is this strange astrochemistry thing about which I'm talking about? Because it's not, it's actually something that I more typically do rather than magnetic fields. And so this for me was an opportunity to link two different fields of astrophysics together to do something really kind of interesting. So what is this astrochemistry thing? Up to the nineteen sixties, astronomers didn't think that molecules could exist in space. It was just, they thought, too harsh of an environment. And given what we knew about terrestrial chemistry and chemical reactions, we just thought it was way too difficult to form molecules in the cold, low-density environments in interstellar space. But in nineteen sixty-three, they discovered the molecule OH. And so that really changed everything, you know? Once you discover something, people can no longer say it's impossible, and you've got to figure out a way to make it possible. And this launched the field of astrochemistry, which is really a lot of observational work, a lot of laboratory work and a lot of theoretical work to try to figure out what are the chemical reaction networks that can produce a variety of different species? And now we've seen over a hundred and fifty different molecules in space. So we've got to be able to understand how we can produce all of these things. How do we produce these different chemical species, all the way up to complex molecules in the really harsh environments of interstellar space? This is just showing you a very simple chemical reaction network for CO, for the formation of CO. You might think you just take carbon and oxygen and slam them together, and that works really well in room temperature labs at high densities here on Earth. But it don't work in space, and you really have to have a very complicated chemical reaction network. Okay, well, we're not really interested in CO. We're interested in the abundance of electrons. So people, like I said, these astrochemists, they put together these very long databases that list the chemical reaction networks for every astrophysically interesting or relevant or observable species. And this just shows you some of the formation reactions that produce free electrons. So for example, reaction one is C minus. So a carbon atom with an extra electron on it interacts with a normal neutral carbon, and that forms the molecule C two plus the free electron, right? And you've got a bunch of these. In fact, there's three hundred and twenty-two formation reactions for electrons in this database. Well, then you also have to couple in the destruction reactions. And these are every single reaction that could possibly destroy a free electron by having it chemically react with something else. This is, these are not nuclear reactions. These are chemical reactions, right? So in this case, H two could react with a free electron, and that actually is what we call a dissociative reaction. It breaks the H two molecule up into two individual hydrogen atoms and the free electron again, right? That's not really destruction, but this would be another one. You take C ten, the long chain carbon atom, which is ionized. You add an electron to it and you form C eight plus C two and so forth, right? So you create a computer code which solves this very complex series of differential equations essentially of three hundred and twenty-two formation reactions and five hundred and eighty destruction reactions. And you can see how the abundance of different species changes over time. So this is a simulation showing over time, this is a hundred years, a thousand years, ten thousand years, a hundred thousand years, a million years, and ten million years. You can see how the C plus abundance, and this is also, this is also the line for electron abundance, changes as a function of time. So this is really just showing us the density of free electrons divided by the overall density of hydrogen. Everything is scaled towards the density of hydrogen because that's the most abundant atom and molecule in the universe. You can see how the oxygen abundance changes as a function of time. Stays relatively constant, and then it drops at about ten to the six years. At the same time that the carbon plus is dropping, carbon is increasing, neutral carbon is increasing. And that's because it's recombining with the electrons to form neutral carbon. And then eventually the carbon disappears because it reacts with the oxygen here to form carbon monoxide and O two and a variety of other things. I'm not showing you all the, you know, a hundred and fifty molecules that it can form, right? So we can use this theoretical astrochemical model to try to understand what the electron abundances are associated with our filamentary molecular clouds. So how do we do that? So imagine that I've got some cloud that looks like this. This is my filamentary molecular cloud, right? It's really a picture of a terrestrial cloud. It's the same idea. And imagine I start outside the surface of this cloud, moving inwards. Now, clouds don't really have a surface, right? It's tenuous. They just keep getting lower and lower density. So there's still cloud material out here, right? Even though you might say the cloud stops right there if I drew it as a cartoon. Now, if I move from the outside where the density is very low, and I move deeper and deeper into the interior where the density begins to increase, I can run my astrochemical model at each position and figure out how many molecules of each species exist at each position by having my code run through all, you know, thousands of these chemical reactions essentially. So starting out there, for example, at the outer edges of the cloud, this line here shows me my electron abundance, so I would have a fairly high electron abundance. It's ten to the minus four with respect to hydrogen. If I move slightly deeper into the cloud, the electron abundance is dropping, right? Because it's recombining with the carbon. If I go even further into the cloud, it drops further. If I go further into the cloud, it drops further. And then it comes into something close to steady state if I go really, really, really deep into the cloud, right? And so at each point here, I can estimate what the density of electrons actually is. And that's precisely what I need at each point now where I have a rotation measure, where I have an external galaxy, which is somewhere around that filament, right? I now know also at that position of that galaxy where I have a rotation measure, I now also have an estimate for what the electron density is. And that was really the new development that we added to this problem, right? So let's go to the results. Since we're forty-three minutes in, I'm actually almost finished, so we can go to the results. This is a map of the California or Oregon molecular cloud. This is showing us the dusty mission. This is the Taurus molecular cloud or the filament showing us the dusty mission again as well. They're somewhat filamentary in nature. They're not perfect cylinders, of course, but they are long and elongated. The blue and the red points show the positions where I have rotation measures, where there were external galaxies that emitted polarized light, and I could measure the rotation measures. But using my chemical code, I can also figure out what the electron abundances are at each of these positions. And so I can actually tell you what the magnetic field strength is and what the direction is. So the blue points show me magnetic field vectors which are pointed towards you, so out of the board. And the red points show me magnetic field vectors which are pointed away from us, so into the board. And what you might notice is that on one side of these clouds, the magnetic fields are primarily pointed towards us. And on the other side, the magnetic fields are primarily pointed away from us, right? So this immediately gets rid of this geometry that the magnetic field vectors, which in the plane of the sky just seem to be perpendicular to the long axis of the filament, right? It can't just be this simple because there is a third dimension. There is a component of magnetic fields coming out of the board and going into the board essentially. So what we're left with now are these two possibilities. I can either have toroidal or helical type fields, or I can have this bow-shaped field here. So how do I disentangle these two? Well, the key now then is you combine the line of sight measurements of magnetic field strength that we have done, that we have taken through our Faraday rotation measurements. And you combine that with the plane of the sky magnetic field vectors that you get from something like the Planck observations of these objects. And now you have a three-dimensional vector, right? I've got something which gives me an orientation in this case, the X Y plane, which is the plane of the sky. And I've now got a third vector, which is the magnetic field orientation along the line of sight. And if I've got my three vectors, right, in Cartesian coordinates, I get a true three-dimensional vector. I get a true three-dimensional direction of the magnetic field at each one of these positions. I don't get it everywhere because I don't have rotation measurement observations everywhere. I only have it at these points. And so, yeah, the polarization measurements give me the plane of the sky. Our Faraday rotation gives us these two measurements. And based on these observations and making the three-dimensional vectors at each one of these positions, it turns out that the bow-shaped morphology seems to work best rather than having magnetic fields which are completely wrapped around the filament. Instead, they just sort of wrap around one side. Now, this is really interesting from a star formation perspective because it implies that the filament must be moving and collides with some lower-density ambient material in which that galactic magnetic field is embedded. And we've seen the galactic magnetic field is everywhere. So what you do is you form the filament through gravitational forces. That filament is moving with respect to the more general diffuse interstellar medium in which you have those galactic magnetic field lines. And that causes the galactic magnetic field to bend around the filament, right? So you start with something like this, where we're looking at the filament along the long axis now, and it is traveling towards or within this lower-density material that has some sort of embedded magnetic field. And as that filament plows into this lower-density material, you cause this material to kink and bend, and the magnetic field lines get carried along with it, and they also kink and bend. Well, now you can have material which can flow along these magnetic field axes here with magnetic field lines and enhance the formation of the filament. Enhance, make the filament, basically feed it with more material, make it flatter or make it more filamentary, thinner, make it more unstable to fragmentation, to allow you to form stars more effectively. So this is the results of a simulation that some collaborators of ours did to look at this sort of thing. So just to remind you, I've got this background galactic magnetic field here, and here's my filament. So if I again look at the filament along the long axis here, and it's traveling at some velocity, and they said, well, let's have it a generalized velocity of ten kilometers per second, which is not an unreasonable velocity for these clouds to be traveling in interstellar space. And this cloud, this filament then, which has formed, plows into this background material, which has a magnetic field of twenty microgouls, all traveling in this direction right here. This shows you the results of that simulation, right? So you start with this monolithic cloud, but like we saw in the earlier simulation, you can gravitationally begin to form some of these weak filaments. But as this cloud with the embedded filamentary structure begins to plow into this this lower-density ambient material in which you have the magnetized medium, right? Looking down on it, you can start to see at this, here you've got those gravitational filaments. But now, as soon as you plow into this cloud, the bending of the magnetic field lines allow the filaments to form more dramatically. And you can start to see that the filaments get really more filamentary in nature, get really long and stringy, and in fact, get very gravitationally unstable. And these dots are showing you where you would have gravitationally unstable fragments that would begin to form individual stars. So this is the movie. This is just the snapshots of this movie, right, looking down at it. And if I look at the shape of the magnetic field through here, because remember, we started with something which was completely parallel. But I look at the shape of the magnetic field at, say, you know, point four four mega-years right here, you do see an overall trend for that ambient magnetic field to be bow-shaped, right? If I'm looking at it from this direction here and looking down on it, I would see a component of the magnetic field towards me in this direction and towards me in that direction essentially, right? And so you have a bow-shaped magnetic field around this part of the cloud, right? So really, this project, which was designed to look for the three-dimensional structure of magnetic fields associated with star-forming filamentary molecular clouds, as we went along, you know, we found that the evidence seemed to indicate that the structure of the magnetic fields around these clouds was actually bow-shaped. And that then in turn gives us a better physical understanding as to how these magnetic fields can affect the formation of filaments and affect the evolution of these filaments, which then enhances the process of star formation. So ultimately, really, it gives us insight into the physical process of star formation. So at that, the fifty-one minute mark, sorry for going a few minutes over. I will end my talk and thank you very much for you bearing with me and for your undivided attention.
Well, thanks, everybody. Everybody, I think we can applaud and thank Renee.
I will stop screen sharing.
Very good.
Do we have questions? People can unmute themselves and ask questions or raise your hand. And in the meantime, I was just wondering, does it really, does it matter very much how strong the galactic magnetic field is? Like, could there be magnetic galaxies with really strong magnetic fields that would start to inhibit star formation or?
You can get the situations where the magnetic fields can inhibit star formation because if you look at the large scale in our own galaxy, it really is much more complicated than the simplest forms. So, you know, if I went back and shared my screen again, if I can find my presentation. There are regions, as I show here, right, where you actually start to get these swirling magnetic fields like that. And that could definitely inhibit the star formation process for sure, right? And the stronger the magnetic fields, either the more you're going to enhance it or the more you're going to inhibit it.
Okay.
Geometry, yeah.
Yeah, so it depends on the shape of the magnetic field.
Yeah.
Well, Orla has a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious to how many regions you got, you have mapped. You know, and how big is the scope of the project? I mean.
So this was really a pilot project. So, so this is why sabbaticals are good. Because a few years ago, I went on sabbatical where you don't have to teach and you know, I went traveling around and visited other astronomy institutes and just started talking to people. And I got this crazy idea because I knew at Calgary, we have a great deal of expertise with Faraday rotation measurements on very large scales, like looking at the galaxy as a whole. But no one has ever done it on these small scales because they thought it was impossible. They, you know, they didn't, didn't see any way to do it. So I just got to thinking about this sort of crazy idea. So it's very difficult to go to a state of the art telescope and say, hey, I've got a really crazy idea. Give me time on your multi million dollar telescope. They won't do it. So we went into archival data. So this is data that I took from a project known as the Canadian Galactic Plane Survey. And we only have data like this that surround these filamentary clouds in four objects. We have the ones that I showed you, Oregon, California. We have Orion that I showed you. We also have Perseus and Porus. And you can also see that the data are quite sparse. So the sensitivity of the Canadian Galactic Plane Survey was not, it was good, it was great for the time. It's not as good as what we can do today. So we actually have a large amount of data from the VLA to redo this project with much greater sensitivity. So rather than a handful of points here, we hope to have 10 times this number. So that will really give us the ability to prove that this technique works. Like, I'm pretty confident that the technique works, but with data which is 10 times more sensitive, we'll be able to do a much better job at, you know, we'll have many more three dimensional vectors here to be able to map this out three dimensionally. And then if, and so I have a PhD student starting in September who's going to work on those data. And if that project pans out, then, you know, this could be, you know, a project that could be many graduate student lifetimes long. Like, we could start using SKA to do this on, you know, hundreds of star forming filaments and see if we're, if the bow shaped field geometry is the most common one, right? It's kind of hard to say, hey, you know, we found a bow shaped, you know, magnetic field in one object. And therefore, all of them have this structure, right?
Thank you.
Looks like Tom had a comment.
Well, it's probably coincidence, but that simulation sure ended up looking like IC 5146, the Cocoon Nebula.
The magnetic field one?
Yep.
Yeah, interesting.
I don't know, Abdur, have you got a, have you got your fine image of that? I don't know if you can pull it up, but.
I don't think there, I think that's pure coincidence.
Pure coincidence, fair enough.
Oh, yeah, Tom, I don't think I have it on this computer.
Okay.
I'm wondering, Renee, where you got regions of, of material with various magnetic fields colliding. Don't you have a lot of turbulence that you now got to consider? So it's not just, have you considered magnetic fields? It's, oh my God, have you considered turbulence, the dreaded turbulence, which no one can predict? It's chaotic. And what does that, what does that do to star formation, whether you're having star formation or not?
Well, that is exactly what these simulations do because if this were purely, I glossed over that. If this were purely a monolithic cloud, it would, it would collapse to one monolithic entity and only under this collision would you get the filamentary structure. But what you do is you start this simulation with a monolithic cloud with turbulence. And you give it a, what they call a Komodorov spectrum of turbulence to it, so that you have large scale turbulence all the way down to smaller scale turbulent eddies. And you allow gravity to take a hold of this thing with the turbulent model involved. Yeah, you can't do it without turbulence. But that's also why they become difficult to analyze because it really just becomes often sitting back and squinting and saying, hey, this kind of looks like what we see in reality, right? As opposed to having really strong analytical tools that allow you to say, this is precisely what we see in reality, that you have to do some sort of, you know, structure tree, you know, diagram analyses or something to to really get a quantitative result out of this. It's quite difficult to do.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's no further questions, we'll move on. I want to thank our guests for the really interesting talk and how we stitch different disciplines together and lines of thinking to to infer what really you, you just can't see with, using one, one approach. So thank you very much. It was very, very, very interesting.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the invitation. I really appreciated it. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey.
So moving along, we're going to, now going to get a musical interlude. Orla is going to provide us with a tune. The title is Someone's Light Machine, and the subject matter is light pollution. So Orla, over to you.
Well, anyways, I just thank you for, Tom, for, for letting me come back. And this is the sixth installment of my songs and sciences I've composed over the years. And in my retirement, I've put together these music videos, stealing images and text from the internet and putting them into a music video. So this one is on light pollution. And there's a little bit of text or commentary followed by, followed by the song.
I can't see them. I can't see them anymore. The May-June issue of Sky News ran two articles related to light pollution. So I thought it timely that at this May meeting of the R A S C Edmonton Center, I should present my song on science entitled Someone's Light Machine. As most of you are aware, light pollution is a growing issue, not only for astronomers, but also for plants and animals who depend on daily light and dark cycles to govern activities such as reproduction, hunting, sleep, and protection from predators. For example, nocturnal animals are active at night, and light pollution alters their nighttime environment. Sea turtles hatch at night on the beach and find the sea by detecting the bright horizon over the ocean. Artificial lights draw them away from the ocean, and in Florida alone, millions of hatchlings die this way every year. Every year, millions of birds die colliding with needlessly illuminated urban buildings and towers. Artificial lights can create a fatal attraction to many insects, and declining insect populations can impact species that rely on insects for food and pollination. Light pollution is excess light above what nature provides, and its source is mainly from industrial development by humans. Most light pollution is found in urban settings where artificial light sources are numerous and is mainly caused by light systems that are misdirected, excessive, inefficient, or unnecessary. For example, light sources may be partly directed towards the sky, or downward directed light may be reflected upward. Light is then dispersed by layers in the atmosphere and produces a glow that diminishes the darkness of the night sky. In large Canadian cities, more than 95% of stars that can be normally seen with the naked eye are no longer visible. For amateur astronomers, light pollution is a major problem because access to a truly dark sky is increasingly difficult to find. For professional astronomers, it interferes with the collection of data, forcing observatories to be built in isolated regions. Organizations such as the International Dark Sky Association and the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada have set up programs that attempt to reduce light pollution. However, everyone can help by adopting four lighting principles that ensure a safe environment while minimizing impacts on the night sky. Number one, reduce light intensity by choosing luminaries with not too excessive light intensity. This will let the eye better adapt to ambient brightness while ensuring necessary visibility and site security. Number two, adjust orientation by choosing luminaries whose light is oriented towards the area to be lighted. Remember that light emitted towards the sky or towards the horizon does not help you see better. Control time by installing a timer or emotion sensor, or by simply turning off the lights before going to bed. That is, use only the light you need. Finally, limit blue light by giving preference to amber light sources over white light ones, which are more harmful to sky glow and health. Light pollution is something we can all help reduce in our homes and backyards, the parks where we play, and our cities. Someone's Light Machine is an expression of regret at the loss of our night sky. I can't see them. I can't see them anymore. When I step outside my door, I'm sure they were there yesterday. But now they have gone away. I used to watch for falling stars and track the retrograde of Mars. Now I can barely find the moon or differentiate midnight from noon. I used to look up at the sky and count a thousand stars by eye. Now I can't see them anymore. Now I can't see them anymore. I'm marveled at the northern lights, but always thought they were too bright. Now they are nowhere to be seen, drowned out by someone's light machine. I used to look up at the sky and count a thousand stars by eye. Now I can't see them anymore. I can't see them anymore. I can't see them anymore. I can't see them anymore.
Okay. There, stop sharing. Thank you.
Again, really great, Orla. And light pollution is a subject, you're preaching to the converted here.
Right. But. I've got an understanding audience.
You certainly do. And it's a great way to get your, get that message across, though, is in song. So kudos to you. And I hope you can, you know, there's something we can do to, to get the message across and something like that. And it's really, could be very effective. So.
I am, I have asked to do a presentation on, on my songs on science or the astronomy, as you call it, the, what, the Star Tunes?
Star Tunes, yeah.
Yeah, at the next upcoming general assembly, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
So we're going to get to the, the announcements section, and maybe I'll ask Frank first. Frank Florian first to speak to the May 15 lunar eclipse and the goings on at Tuesday. Frank?
All right, thanks, Tom. Yeah, we all know there's a lunar eclipse next Sunday, and I'm still planning on doing some telescopes at the Telsroy Science Edmonton. Just because we might get some people out since it's still taking place early enough in the evening. I know most R A C members probably want to get out of town or find a nice high plateau somewhere where they get a nice clear view to the southeast. But for any R A C members that might not be going anywhere, if you do want to set up a telescope in Carnation Park, I'd love to have you out. We'd have to find a location that kind of gives us a better line of sight towards the southeast. But nonetheless, I'm sure we'll get a few people coming by next Sunday if the weather stays clear. So if you are, just let me know. Send an email to my work email at fflorian@twosc.ca. And we can get there or just show up if you can. The weather right now looks pretty promising in the Edmonton area for Sunday, but you know, weather can change just like that. So I'm hoping it'll be clear. So we'll see. The Observatory at the Science Center doesn't provide us the best view to the southeast, so we probably wouldn't open that up. We have telescopes somewhere in the grassy area, just outside by the observatory, or maybe north of the building of the Telsroy Science Edmonton. So that, that's actually up and coming. There's also a new exhibit that we're bringing into the Science Center too called Apollo. When we went to the moon, that'll be starting on June 9. And I've sent Tom just a note that I'd like to set maybe some R A C tables if possible during certain dates. So a little bit different over the lunar eclipse, but again, some up and coming events. And I mentioned an email to Tom too, that comes September meeting, when we hopefully will meet in person again at the Science Center. I can open up the exhibit earlier. So if anybody wants to take a look at Apollo when we went to the moon before the meeting in September, please come about early. We'll, we'll give you more details and I'll talk to Tom and the web people at the R A C just to see if we can maybe put something like that at the, the information for the September meeting. But that, again, is pretty far away. That's everything, Tom. Oh, did I freeze up?
No, I think Tom froze.
Oh.
There you go.
Well, so if you, yeah, so just saying to Clayton, if that's something that maybe can do in the way of public outreach, I think that'd be a great opportunity. I want to remind everybody that we are having a casino at Pure Casino, 7055 Argyle Road on May 27. Thanks to the, the great efforts of Luca. And I'm pretty sure all of his volunteer needs are filled. If not, he can jump in at this point. But it would be great for people to drop by and maybe, you know, plunk a few shekels into the the slots to, to help the cause, or even if you want, don't want to go to that. In fact, you could even donate directly to the R A S C. Wonders never cease. So think about that. And, but it would be nice to, it would be nice to see some familiar faces at the casino on the, on Friday, the 27th.
By the rules of the A G L C, you are not allowed to play if you are the volunteer group in there. So no R A F member should be playing if they're there.
Oh, I did not know that. I stand corrected. Well, that's a pity. Well, I guess you'll just have to donate directly to the R A S C then. So that's just the way it is. Thanks for that, Clayton.
Is it just one day?
No, it's two days, 27th to 28th. Yep. Then we've got, I wanted to, I was asked to talk about Stardust articles. And certainly, if we would be inviting and encouraging members to commit anything astronomy related to the Stardust editor, Michael Ward. And you know, some examples might be your most memorable experience while out observing, or maybe some technical details related to an object of great interest to you. Stardust is our newsletter. People do read it in its electronic form. I think the circulation we, we had about them hits last time, somebody checked on, on Stardust. And beauty of it is, I mean, we've got. And beauty of it is, I mean, we've got, we've got additions going back to the fifties to the, the beginning of publication. And so you get yourself in there, you're, you're kind of immortalized. So why not share some experiences that you've got in the way of an article? I remember I did one about a trip that we took to, to Costa Rica back in two thousand and fourteen, and it's there. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's just a great thing to do. So I strongly encourage everybody to be submitting start articles to Stardust. Anything at all, I'm sure would be, would be very welcome. And speaking of going back in time, June thirteenth is our next meeting, and we are going to have, it's going to be a members' presentations night. So we will be calling on the inimitable Franklin Lodi to provide us with another installment of his history of the R E S C Edmonton Centre. And I think the last, he was up, he was about to start in the swinging sixties when we, when we ran out of time for the last presentation. So we look forward to having that, having Franklin carry on with his reminiscences. And we're all going to be vastly entertained by that. But I would like other members to, to make, to come forward and submit presentations. And certainly we'll be able to accommodate you on the agenda. We've got Susan and Rick Bram with us, and they want to, yes?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. And they want to speak to the Northern Prairie Star Party. So Susan and Rick, take it away.
We just got a low power note on our, on our iPad. So we're just, Dakota. Just, just a couple of notes. The Stardust just came out this afternoon, and, and I have three articles in there. One is to remind people who would like to book a camping site at the northern, for the Northern Prairie Star Party, which runs September twentieth to the twenty-fifth. Send us an email because we booked the entire north part of the campground for the, for the, for the Tuesday through to the Sunday. And we have a number of people who have already booked, but we do still have lots of opportunity for booking sites. We'll get in touch with you later in the summer for payment arrangements and so on. So that's the first article. The second is that we're very, very pleased to let you know that our keynote speaker is actually going to be a fellow colleague of our speaker from tonight, Eric Donovan, professor at the University of Calgary. He's in the Department of Physics and Astronomy. And he's, his area of research focuses on the magnetosphere and the region of space around the earth that shields us from the solar wind and other dangerous space radiation. And he uses the Aurora to remote sense the magnetosphere. So in a real sense, the Aurora is his scientific instrument, and his camera networks are how he reads data from it. In this talk, Eric will discuss causes of the Aurora and how deflects physical processes in the magnetosphere. Presently, the University of Calgary Aurora Imaging Group is prototyping candidate replacements for the Themis ASIs, one of which Eric will be bringing to the event and operating. And it will be a hands-on demonstration of a cutting-edge space physics observational tool. Interesting.
Maybe I should just add that it occurred to me that this would be a great theme for, for the Northern Prairie Star Party. We've been through the solar minimum, and as Abdur has mentioned, the sun is, is climbing up towards solar max, probably twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And I would assume actually the Aurora will become more and more common too. So it would be, oh, sorry for the deep sky astronomers, but anyway. Anyway, anyway, I think that we could always stand to be re-informed, informed about the Aurora. You know, it's very beautiful, but it has a really very interesting scientific background to it. And personally, I'm always keen to hear, hear about why we see this wonderful thing.
And actually, we got onto Eric's research area because we discovered Aurora Max, which is an online live observatory project operating out of Yellowknife, and some of you may be aware of it. It's a public outreach initiative, initiative dedicated to monitoring the intensity and frequency of the Aurora Borealis above Yellowknife through and beyond solar max, the peak of the old New Year sunset, sunspot cycle by monitoring auroral activity before, during, and after coronal mass ejections and other space weather events. And Eric's team provides the scientific and technical support for Aurora Max. So check it out. It's a very, very interesting project. The last thing I wanted to mention was that we have a number of ways that you can participate as an R A C member and volunteer during our star party in September twentieth to the twenty-fifth. And those four ways are listed in the article in the Stardust this month. One is we're looking for people to give small Astro Cafe-like sessions during the star party on Friday and, and Saturday. And in the evenings of that week, if you're going to be out there, if you'd like to offer, just send us an email at npsp@edmontonrasp.com. We're also looking for door prizes. In the past, members have donated prizes for all ages of attendees at this event. If you have new or used items, we would love to hear from you. In past, this is arranged from beginner telescopes, various accessories, books, memorabilia, and even astronomy-related art. So we've approached our two vendors that are, will be approaching the two vendors that have helped us out, including All-Star Telescope. It's relocated to Edmonton. But if you know of other vendors that might be able to provide door prizes, please let us know as well. And then getting closer to the actual event, we do sometimes need help with people taking items out, for example, signs and traffic cones. If you have room in your vehicle, let us know. And then onsite, we have a schedule for people to help us with registration, setup, and so on. So we'll have more details and more program details in next week, next month's June issue of Stardust. So if you have any questions, just let us know. We'd be happy to answer them too. Looking forward to seeing you. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Rick and Susan. Great, great presentation about the Northern Prairie Star Party. And as far as All-Star Telescope concerns, it looks like their supply chain issues have been resolved. Getting all kinds of information from them about products that they're getting in. So that's, that's great to hear.
Yeah.
Orla, you have your hand up, I see.
If I have my hand up, I, it was a mistake. I think I kept it up from my question to, to the speaker. I took it. Yeah.
Okay. And I think our last announcement will be from Alistair. Alistair?
Good evening. Thank you. Two brief announcements. The first is introduction to stargazing, the fourth Wednesday of the month. There will, in fact, after all, be a May twenty-fifth session. Berta, who co-hosts with me, will be running the full session as I'm stepping away just for this particular one. So May twenty-fifth, fourth Wednesday, introduction to stargazing. You don't need to have seen the previous ones to join in. And then finally, on a national level, join a community of astronomy lovers for the R A S C General Assembly, June twenty-four to twenty-seven. So weekend. This year's G A is a four-day program of outreach, in-reach, and up-reach. Natalie Weller of the Institute for Research on Exoplanets will present the Helen Sawyer-Hogg Lecture. There will be other engaging speakers, social events, youth activities, citizen science, astrophotography, and cross-Canada observing. So once again, that's June twenty-four to twenty-seven. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to say it gladdens my heart to see the club being able to come back to life. After two years of the pandemic, we're starting to have events again, and people get together. Looking forward to seeing everybody in person, I'm hoping in September. And we're going to have that, that'll be a main subject of our council meeting before we adjourn for the summer. And I'm sure we'll be working with Frank to, to make that a reality. So looking forward to seeing everyone.
There are hands up.
There are hands up. Okay. Brian, and then, and then Robert. Brian?
Hi. The observatory in New Brook, we're going to have open on the twenty-fifth of June. It's New Brook Fair Days. So if anybody's interested to come and have a look at the original camera from nineteen fifty-one and the observatory, you're certainly welcome. I'm also inquiring about setting up star parties once we can get them going in October or November. How do I go about getting that organized?
Talk to Clayton. Yeah, we're, just send a, an email to the Public Education Director, and I'll get back to you, and we can start doing some planning.
Okay. We had a trade fair in Thorhild on last Saturday. And I approached many, many kids about looking at a telescope. I put my telescope up there, and they're very keen on seeing things like this. So also a lot of adults came through. There was one who mentioned, oh, my goodness, I've forgotten the name now. Just to involve, you know, everybody in getting this observatory up and running. It's been put back to the same status as it was when it was originally constructed in fifty-one, fifty-two. The camera that's in there was manufactured in Connecticut in nineteen fifty-one. So if anybody's interested, they're so most welcome to come. And the last question I have, what can I send to the local newspaper? Information that we, that they can put something in the paper every week or bi-weekly about the R A S C. It needs to be not very highfalutin stuff for kids and those people interested to read who want to learn about looking at the stars and planets. Is anything that gets sent around that I could send to the newspaper?
So I'm going to toss that over to Jeff, because it'd be kind of in the nature of a, almost like a old-fashioned press release announcing various events and so forth. What do you think, Jeff?
Uh, yeah. I've never really thought about that, actually. Yeah, I guess so. I mean, I could take something from the WhatsApp and just slap it in there. You know, something really short and sweet. So I guess we could do something like that. Yeah. It's just, you said, what, every fortnight is what you're looking for, or every month, or what?
Whatever we can do. I just want to get, try and get something going in the Thorhild County with the observatory, so it becomes more well-known. And if we can get the kids interested.
Okay. Well, when you're sending a, an email to Clayton, I'm in the directory too under past president or public relations, both, both places. Send me an email and just kind of give me a schedule and, you know, what exactly you're looking for. I'll see what I can come up with.
That'd be fantastic. Okay.
Also, Brian, meteorologically speaking, November is one of the worst months of the year. So avoid November. You can get a good night, but I think just about everyone here says, hasn't every month been a lousy month? Yeah, but November is lousier, so.
Yeah. They're planning also to have a grand opening, a grand reopening of the observatory here. And we've, I've spoken to the Canadian Space Agency, and if we get schools interested and get a lot of students there, they prepare to put an astronaut in place. So it's looking good if we can get things organized. NASA is also interested because of the, the history with Sputnik and that sort of thing from this observatory. So there's a lot of potential there if we can get things together.
Just chatting with, with Abdur, looks like Saturn and Jupiter will be pretty well-positioned around the time of the Northern Prairie Star Parties. Abdur says Saturn will be at about twenty-two degrees, which is pretty good, and Jupiter at thirty-nine degrees, which is really good. And of course, Saturn is always a showstopper. So that's, that bodes well. Robert, you wanted to, to contribute.
Yes, I did. Since the president is wearing an Euler sweater, and since Jeff has his logo on the Death Star, I would like their learned opinion on whether the Edmonton Oilers are going to show up to play tomorrow as if they intend to move on.
Well, I think it's Mr. McCurdy who's the expert in that subject.
I certainly hope so.
I'll cede it to him.
I certainly hope the McCurdy curse is not invoked for tomorrow's game.
Yeah.
Bruce, care to go out on a limb?
Better. Hundred percent they'll show up. Whether they'll win, less than a hundred percent, but I wouldn't expect another disappointing showing like last night. I think they will rebound. I sure, Tom.
Thanks. Thanks.
I said to my wife last night, I thought, you know, some of those guys looked like they went to Vegas on a day trip the day before. You know, because particularly Barry, he just couldn't handle the puck to save his own life, I don't think. It was, it was just, did a lot of yelling at the television yesterday.
Well, I think, Robert, I think the stars will shine.
No, I think they'll, they'll show up if they realize they have a chance to move on. I liked the description on Bruce's blog. There were his partner just said they were stick checking instead of hitting a very good team. So I'm, I've been very excited to watch how well they've done. It reminded me of the old days. So I just thought I'd pass it on because when I started joining your active meetings here, I also saw that Jeff was, always had a comment on the Oilers just when they started that big run in December. Okay, so I'll let you get back to astronomy. Thank you.
Appreciate the, appreciate the, the sentiment. All right. Well, I think we've come to the end of the program. I thank everybody. It's nice to see all of, all of everybody again. And again, look forward to seeing everybody in person in the fall. We'll have one more, one more meeting before that happens. So we'll see you in June. So I'm going to sign off. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Tom.
Have a good one.
Good day, everybody.